...tax revenue is modeled consistent with state law, providing for exemption of taxes for five years. The city does not anticipate material changes to other tax revenue due to annexation. In the case of each of these analyses, we went step by step with city finance staff to validate the underlying assumptions and statutory basis for that analysis. Again, a lot of the assumption with regard to limited amount of growth in expenditures is because of the anticipated, uh, slow growth in population in the annexation study areas because of the fact that they're already significantly built out, so that there is no anticipated impact on police firing and that's cause. And as I pointed out already, we think the city did a good job and in many ways best practice approach of modeling the cost of public works, not based upon citywide averages, but looking specifically, uh, but looking specifically to District Six as a model for what will occur in the study areas. We try and go through in each of, uh, in both the validation of the general fund revenue and the general fund expenditures, some areas where the city might want to do more in terms of analysis. Quite honestly, we think these are areas that are worth monitoring in terms of additional analysis that would be required before the council were to make a decision. Additional best practices that the city pursued in its analysis, uh, some models look out, some models of annexation look at not at all. They just take a single year approach or one or two year approach in terms of financial impact. That's not what the city did. Some places have gone as far as 20 years. Council required a 10-year look. That's exactly what, uh, city staff did. With regard to the context that I talked about, and I'll close on this so that there's no question, again, we think it is highly relevant that cities has experienced this loss of population over time. That has an impact on areas and we relied significantly on some work that was done by Parkin Birmingham to look at some of the issues around efficiency, some of the issues around economic growth and the impact of both long-term, uh, long-term population decline, not just on the city but on the surrounding region and opportunities for greater efficiency in service delivery. So with that, I think I went past my 20 minutes plus. So let me stop and we're happy to answer any questions.
At this present time, anything from the council?
Yeah, and just FYI, we ain't no rush, so make sure you just cover everything, okay? Uh, Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all for being here. Oh, thank you everybody for being here today. Just some clarification questions. I believe you said at the beginning of your presentation that PFM has done similar work for other municipalities and you mentioned, uh, can you remind, refresh my recollection on some of those municipalities?
Sure. We did work for the city of San Antonio, I believe in 2016, and I think a year or two later, we did the rather unique analysis that we were asked to do by both the city of Memphis Tennessee and Shelby County as they looked jointly at a potential E-annexation.
Thank you. And so you're familiar with how, how this should be, how this, uh, let me see, the methodology that should be employed in determining whether, at least from a financial standpoint, annexation makes sense or not?
Yes.
you, um, you, as a part of your work, you evaluated the city's fiscal impact model assumptions relative to the commonly employed, that commonly employed by other municipalities nationwide and the methodology and the data and that kind of thing, uh, and compared that to best practices and determined that, um, that the, the city's work was, um, consistent with best practices and, and the methodology that's usually employed in such exercises.
I think that every jurisdiction does it a little bit differently, right? And in part, that's driven by access to different types of data. I think what we found was, A, based on the data that the city had available to it, what they did in modeling both revenue and expenditures made sense and was consistent with what we've seen in best practices elsewhere. And, and B, I think again, and I tried to talk about it a little bit in my presentation, the test is really reasonable, right? So that a reasonable person-
As you said, no one has a crystal ball. It's just a question of whether-
Right. And, and we certainly found the approach to be reasonable.
And, and for each of the study areas, the cost benefit analysis suggests that under the worst case scenario, in other words, low growth in revenue and high growth in expenditures, revenue will still significantly exceed expenditures.
Yes.
And I, I'm going back now to page seven, where you give an estimate of that, and it says, "Under the city's scenarios, assuming a low growth rate for revenue and a baseline growth for expenditures, the net fiscal impact on that revenue would, it would be that revenue would exceed expenditures by $105.7 million over 10 years and $14.6 million in year 10." Right?
Yes.
I was interested in seeing the, the information on the SSUT, uh, because I guess I had not realized that, um, that, that percentage that we get is not going to be adjusted until after the 2030 census. And you, you show that in here, that, that there's no increase in the SSU, no, yeah, no increase in the SSUT as a result of annexation.
That's right. Mostly largely because of the change in population wouldn't be recognized until either the city goes through the next census or if they, the city makes a personal request to get the population number changed, which based on our conversation with city staff, they would be open to, but for the purposes of the forecast as well as our assumptions, we assumed that the population number would not be reflected until the 2030 census.
And again, I want to come back to, this is on page 22, uh, and you say, "In modeling the sales tax revenue, that the city employed best practices, uh, including a demand side analysis as a driver for sales tax revenue projections." And then the city also used best practices for its estimate of the increases in expenditures, right? And, and also use best practices in calculating any increases in personnel expenditures.
Yes. And you- Yes, I think, and with respect to, uh, with respect to the sales tax revenue, right, it was a rather specific analysis that finance did, looking at particular locations within the proposed annexation area. With regard to expenditures, again, the biggest significant new expenditures, because some of the services that are already provided as part of the police jurisdiction are through public works. And we actually thought that the approach was really basing this off of, not, not trying to basically create a new baseline for, for the annexation area, but adopting, uh, as the baseline what's going on in District Six right now was, was a particular thoughtful approach on that.
And again, after, after examining all this data and determining that, that the, that the, that the data was applied, that the estimates that are, that were gathered from the data were in accord with best practices, using a worst case scenario, the net fiscal impact would, for the city would be a positive $106 million over 10 years and $14.5 million in year 10. Is that correct? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Did PF, uh, PFM look at the scenarios to determine the financial impact if only part of proposed areas to come in? For example, if they only took a significant number of new residents but did not hit the 200K threshold? Like example, study area D, the population says 203,000, but it's an estimated population in 200, um, in 2030 that we'll only be at 198. Did we look at scenarios, um, just in case the impact financially, if we didn't meet that 200K mark?
I think that the, the, and Miss Scott should comment on this as well. I think the relevance of the 200,000, uh, sort of benchmark, right, is less about direct revenue through things like sales tax and other principal revenue sources for the city. It goes more to sort of the economic competitiveness of the city, the economic competitiveness of, of the region and the ability to access certain federal resources for the city. As well as the ability, by the way, as well as for the areas that would be subject to annexation, if they weren't annexed and were sort of on their own, either as an incorporated or as part of a smaller jurisdiction, the, the limitations on their ability to benefit from certain federal resources.
Can I ask a follow-up question right here to his question? If that's the case, you just stated that the population change wouldn't be realized until the next census in 2030 or recognized by the federal government. So until 2030, the city of Mobile would still be considered a small city or a medium city without that recognition done. Is that not correct?
I'm not sure about that. I think it depends upon the specific program as to whether or not the federal government looks to census data, decennial data, or they, whether they rely upon data from county and city estimates in the American Community Survey.
That's right. I believe that the SSUT data, uh, the state of Alabama does rely on census data, which is why the, the 2030 mark is important for that particular revenue projection. But for other items, as, as David said, oftentimes that's relying on what the city or the county reports, self-reports.
So to respond that, again, it was be safe to assume that additional revenues based on competitiveness of, of a certain sized city wouldn't be recognized until after 2030. Uh, we wouldn't be considered a large city of population over 200,000 based on what I've just said, based on what you just told me?
Well, actually, I think what I said is say, what you'd see, I would guess with in a short period of time, I don't know if it'd be the same year or not, after there was annexation, is that when the Census Bureau issues its annual, so Census Bureau, right, has decennial data on population, which is census-based, and it has annual data, which is estimated population by, by the city. So I think, right, you wouldn't see, to the extent that the question is, would you see the increase in the city's population, uh, before 2030? No, because there isn't a census in it. Would you see it in sort of the annual city population estimate before 2030? I think you would.
So just on the competitiveness, for large cities, we wouldn't be recognized until after 2030, and that's provided that the 2030 census shows that we maintain the growth of the annexation?
Yeah, I don't believe that's what I said. I think what I said is that the city could see an increase in population in its annual city population estimate that the census does prior to 2030, depending on the timing of the annexation.
Um, my question is, is when do we become realized as above 200,000?
You would be realized for the purposes of, and again, some of what the federal government relies upon for grant programs and the eligibility for certain funding, some of it's based on census data, some of it is based on annual population estimates. So if there's an annual population estimation, I guess you would say showing the city over 200,000, which I think there would be after annexation, then it would be then.
Um, I haven't, in my first eight years, seen an annual population projection from the city, and in my third term here, I haven't seen one. I don't think that's something that we do annually.
It's, the city doesn't do it.
So who does?
The Census Bureau does. So every year, you'll see, and you may have actually seen this right now, there were headlines within the last week or so comparing where population has gone up and gone down on a state-by-state basis since 2020. So what the census does is they develop, they develop local level estimates, state level estimates, and national level estimates, so that the, the data around population isn't just every 10 years at any of those levels. So the Census Bureau goes that, does it. I will tell you, because I was part of challenging them, they're not always right, uh, but the Census Bureau actually does have a good process for both estimating population at the city level and also allowing cities to argue that it's, should be higher. It's not, it's not a city estimate, it's an estimate of the city's population by the Bureau of Census.
In anticipation of that question, I looked last week and this week, uh, there hasn't been a change in the local municipality of Mobile's estimation since, uh, 21 maybe? Or was it 20? And in 21, based on the 2020 census, uh, that number went from 187 to 184.
Right.
It's been two years now with no change in estimation. Uh, and then when I called to follow up on that, uh, it could be another five years before or whenever they choose to do it. So it's not, uh, it's maybe semi-annual or annual. I, I haven't gotten a response that says, "We do this every year."
Your, the census does it every year, not just for Mobile, for every city.
Well, their response, they gave me a response that was spotty, and I looked this up just waiting to see where we were on this question. So it's, we don't know exactly when we would have or see a number that may even project us to be above 200, 200,000 people.
I, councilmember, I can tell you, and I'm happy to share it with you, that this is one of the things the Bureau of the Census does. I will tell you, they don't do it perfectly all the time, but they do it annually.
Well, if, if looking for that magic number, then there needs to be something ironclad out there that says we're above that number. And if, if that doesn't, uh, doesn't occur until 2030, then, you know, I'm kind of concerned about that. Uh, it sounds like the only ironclad date we have is 2030, and the rest of it is just, I'm talking, this 2030 census. The rest of it is just estimated value without a true ironclad counting or reckoning.
Bureau of the Census estimates city population on an annual basis.
Spoken like a good lawyer. Um, question number two.
Oh, look, Mr.-
Hold on. You weren't finished, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you had a follow-up question, councilmember.
Hold on one second, Cora. Um, Mr. Day has a follow-up question, we're gonna come right back to you.
Okay.
With your second question.
The, the only reason this 200,000 number is important is because what it does with respect to federal grants. Now, coming back to page seven of your report, this, uh, this, this estimate of the $105.7 million over 10 years and $14.6 million in 10, year 10, doesn't have anything to do with federal grants. That's, that's from our direct taxation, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Pan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I have a, a hard two o'clock hour, I had a prior engagement, so I just wanted to get some of the questions in, uh, before I have to leave. I wanted to make sure, get some clarity, I had the opportunity, of course, to go through the, the material, like you said, it's long, so I want to make sure I don't miss anything. Um, you stated that you validated the city, uh, the data that was in there. I just want to make sure it's clarity for the community, so everyone get, understand exactly what you, you validated. Was it just finan, financial data that you validated? Was it, what, what did you validate when you said, um, the, the maps, data documents? Was it just dealing with the finance component of?
We looked primarily at the finance components. There were eight specific pieces of data that were required under, under the council resolution. We looked at each of those, whether they were available, what the substitution was. I think they were primarily financial. If there was other data that the city presented to us as part of what they were doing, we looked at that, we looked at that as well. And again, in every case where was not data that was developed by the city, uh, which is the case for number, uh, for most of the, the financial data with respect to the city's own finances, where there are external sources, we looked at those external sources as well. Okay? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Uh, Ms. Burgery.
Thank you. We appreciate you all being here and providing us with this information and, of course, all of the documentation that makes for easy reading. Just a, a couple of things in the follow-up. You were talking about the, the types of data that you analyzed. Besides the financial, I know there have been a lot of questions about, well, what about the services that the city is required to provide? We obviously know the garbage and trash, so public works would be one of the, the major services that the city will be required to provide, but public, uh, public safety is already provided in these areas. Other questions have come up about water and sewer service and some of the other things that the city is required to do that, of course, are not being done in these areas. Did you look at anything else that would take away from that net revenue that we don't know about or that we haven't really mentioned today, like some of the other things that the city does? Sending inspectors out, tree trimming, you know, those types of things?
Yeah, so the, the expenditure analysis actually does include things like tree trimming, public services, additional staff related to the, the increased costs related to, um, providing maintenance in public services in the, the proposed study areas. And most of those costs are based off of, uh, the city staff thinking and looking towards District Six and how much it takes and the cost associated with doing similar levels of maintenance in that particular study area.
And I know that using District Six is probably because it is a newer area of the city, so you're looking at those areas in West Mobile as being, um, kind of along the same lines as they are as far as the street resurfacing, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, you know, all those types of things that the city would not necessarily have to immediately go out and like resurface or remedy any of them. And just to follow up also on best practices, those of us who sit here hear this all the time, but can you just explain for the general public, what does best practices mean and and how does that relate to what we do?
Uh, to, I think that there are, I think, I sometimes think about this in three categories. Things that sound like good ideas, promising practices and best practices. And I think what best practices really are, are things where an independent organization or organizations have looked at certain practices and said, "This is a, this is a good way to do this." You come to it with a, a certain level of expertise. And that's what we look for here, right? So that we didn't just, we didn't just look at what a bunch of other cities did, we looked at commentary from, uh, national organizations with regard to finance, government finance officers associations frequently sided with American Planning, frequently American Planning Association, where they've sort of said, "This is a good standard, uh, to look at." Particularly within the financial piece, which very much is, is where our expertise is, the importance of looking at multiple scenarios on both the revenue side and the expenditure side really can't be overstated. It, it is, it is the, the worst nightmare, I would say, of most finance people to only look at sort of the best case scenario. Finance people frequently look at the worst case scenario because that's what they have to do to be conservative and appropriate. So in that, in that regard, that is a specific type of best practice that other, not just other places have, have employed when looking at annexation, but really has been highlighted by national organizations with the sort of expertise that we're looking at.
And last question on the growth. Y'all had mentioned that there will be limited growth in these new areas. In fact, from 2020 to 2030, each area would have less population than is shown in 2020. In some of these areas, is the reason for limited growth just common people just move, they find somewhere else to go, or is some of the limited growth due to the fact that there are boundaries set and there are vacant pieces of property or no vacant pieces of property? I'm guessing it's because where the boundaries are, there's really nowhere else to build a house so that people could not come in and build new subdivisions, so then the growth is limited in that respect?
That's right. The, from what we've understood from the city, the, the annexation areas and the proposed study areas are largely already built out, um, and there's not significant amount of additional or available space to put, uh, additional residential housing, um, in development. And then the vacant, um, and available land is already, or has been deemed either undevelopable, either by wetlands or marshes and other things, or, um, is in proximity or already, uh, identified with uses for it.
And as far as having the limited growth or fewer or a smaller population in all of these areas, is that just, I think, unless I just read it wrong, in, in 2030, would it have fewer or less population from 2020 or is?
I think that's when we look at the combination of the population of sort of, when we look at the overall population of the city. I think that, that, I don't think there's any scenario where we're looking at the, the population in the study areas going down.
So you don't think the, the population in those study areas would go down over time?
No, but, but I think what we saw to, I think we talked about the fact that if you look back from 2010 to 2020, census to census, and looked across the largest of these areas, I think there was population, there was double-digit percentage of population there, right? I think what we're saying, based on what was presented to us by the city, what we validated, we actually went out and, I, I didn't, but, um, Miss Scott and Miss Benson went out and looked at some of these areas, uh, you know, what we're saying is, we don't think that's going to be repeated from 2020 to 2030 because it is built out to the extent that it is.
I was looking at, I think it's on, um, one of the last pages, um, 19, pardon me?
Yeah, yeah. Down at the bottom.
Are you finished, Mr. Gregory? Yeah, we got a message also that, uh, that federal agencies often use the estimated census data, they gather annually or every two years. And also the answer is under census.gov frequently asks questions, "Why does the Census Bureau produce estimates on its use to determine the acquisitions of funds to states and local governments?" And I did not mean to skip you, Mr. Carroll. I think you had a second question.
No, you go ahead. I was fine with that.
No, no.
Uh, and I'm, I'm practically in line with that. To follow up on the last statement, though, however, um, when you say that the population in the proposed study areas would not decline, uh, in the overall analysis of the city, uh, is there anything that projects why the population within the inner city is leaving? And, and if so, if the people in the annexed area are gonna maintain steady, then where is everybody else gonna go? Because the trend is to be outside the city limits in everything that I've seen and not inside the city.
Yeah. So that was not, that question is a sort of, why is the population in the city declining? And it's been, you know, I think we point out that there has been, all of the net population growth in the entire county for the last six decades has been outside of the, the current boundaries of the city. We were not asked to look at that, right? What I could tell you based on work that we've done in other cities that are in some ways like Mobile, um, is two things. One, there are a lot of factors to that, particularly if you take a six-day pay horizon. Some of it have to do with housing choice, some of it have to do with race, some of it has to do with economic opportunity, some of it has to do with schools. I, we didn't look at it, so I can't tell you in great detail, these are the reasons that, that it's occurred, uh, for the city of Mobile. But the second thing that I can tell you is, it's not irreversible, right? So that I mentioned that, uh, part of my experience, part of my background in dealing with these issues is having been the city finance officer for the city of Chattanooga, right? Which is, so was when, uh, in 19, in 2000, slightly smaller than- right, which is, so was when, in 19, in 2000, slightly smaller than where Mobile is there, slightly less populous. Chattanooga lost 10% of its population between 1980 and 1990. And most people thought that it was going to continue to lose population. Some of that was because, actually, there was an increase in population due to annexation, but part of it was because there were policies specifically designed to rebuild some of the core part of Chattanooga. I was telling Mayor, I was telling Chief Barber earlier, Chattanooga's actually a city that had about 130,000 people and 30 square miles. It now has about 180,000 people and 200 square miles. So annexation over a 90-year period of time obviously played a role. But what really played a role between 1990 and the present was sort of a coming back and growth and increase in population in the core of the city. There aren't a lot of cities that have seen that sort of turnaround, but there are cities that have that, have seen that sort of turnaround.
Yeah, I appreciate that statement. I met a guy here in Mobile in 2010. His name was Mike. He's passed now. Mike would always talk about the growth of Chattanooga and its revitalization and the work that was done in order to revitalize Chattanooga. In saying that, in reading through the first 29 pages and then also through the other 140 pages of appendices and data, I couldn't find anywhere where there was any correlation to the statistics on voting age population and what would happen if this portion of this area didn't come in and these people did. There was nothing that kind of directed the attention to what the demographics looked like within the annex, within the possible annexation area. That's been a huge concern to a lot of people here in the city. Did you guys look at any of those numbers? And if so, what were they?
Sue, the only numbers that we looked at with regard to demographics were some of the data that the, that the city provided in terms of voting age population and in terms of the actual population and in terms of race for each of the study areas sort of as is, as is right now. What we did with that data, as I said we did with all of the data, is we validated it. So we looked at the source, the source of that, which in that case was the 2020 census. And Ms. Scott and other members of our team met, I guess with the city's GIS team, to go over that. We did not go beyond that because that was not part of the scope that we were operating under pursuant to the council's resolution. So, for example, we went well beyond that sort of analysis with regard to the cost-benefit analysis because that was something that the city was specifically asked to do as, as part of the resolution, and we were able to assess its reasonableness.
And so we're still sort of in limbo with if-in areas, if, if Kings Branch didn't come in versus Cottage Hill or those things, we still really don't know what those projections look like.
The, those projections were not part of what we reviewed.
I mean, it's kind of impossible to tell who's going to vote to come in and who's not anyway, right? We don't know that, wouldn't know that until we actually saw who decides to come in and who doesn't.
Well, councilmember, as much as we've talked about census data and demographics today, I, that, those demographics aren't, census data, I could have a good conversation with you about, sort of a demographic analysis of voting age population post-annexation wasn't part of our scope and I can't shed much light on it.
One more thing that I was thinking about is that overall growth of the city. The overall growth of the city, I think you said it was kind of hard to determine or you didn't have a crystal ball when it came to continued growth within the study areas or possible annexed areas. So we don't know that those areas are going to continue to flourish or if they're going to remain flat or if there'll be additional growth with new businesses. Was that looked at? And if so, how did you derive with those, those numbers?
Sue, you want to talk about this?
Sure. So particularly when we're looking at the areas of revenue, the city identified the three sort of scenarios, a high-growth scenario that aligns revenue growth to a high-growth scenario around population. So aligning that growth with the historical 10-year population growth that the city has seen in those particular study, proposed study areas. The more baseline, which aligns with a 5%, and then a 3% for the low-growth scenario, I think really sort of shed light on your, your answer to your question, councilmember, where the city has sort of looked at the three potential avenues around how the demand on particularly on the revenue side could be seen within the study area, looking at a high-growth scenario around population, and then looking at a five-year, which is based on historical averages.
Uh, your report said on, uh, said on page two, line three, that the projections of limited increase in the population in annexed areas seem to be consistent with availability data, even though it's inconsistent with recent historic trends. So it's inconsistent. So define inconsistent. What's the inconsistency with the recent historic trends?
Sure.
Because her whole answer there just reverted back to this one sentence.
Actually, I think what we were saying is that we looked at multiple scenarios for this certain reason, because as you pointed out, we did say we don't have a crystal ball on these things. So we looked at both the potential for higher growth, but also the potential for lower growth. To the extent that it's inconsistent, right, if you look for each, at each of the different study areas, and I believe this is on page 23 of the actual report, for each study areas, we show the percentage change in population from 2010 to 2020. And as I suggested, I think in response to Vice President Gregory's question, what we saw in each of these study areas historically over the last 10 years is that there was 10% plus growth in each of those areas. Well, to the extent that there's a reliance in part for, for sort of the baseline growth for these areas, we're saying it's going to be less than 10%, right?
Less than.
And the reason we're saying it's going to be less than 10%, it goes back to the questions that were asked about sort of what's developed, right? Where can you, if you wanted to, you know, if you're, if you're going to have a lot more people in each of these different study areas, where are they going to live? And again, based on the data provided by the city, what we looked at, what we thought was reasonable, we don't think there's developable space that would accommodate that similar sort of double-digit percentage growth in the, in the next decade in the way that it was accommodated in the prior decade.
Well, with that many rooftops out there, what about projected development of commercial and retail space?
Sue, Sue, I think what was done with that, you want to talk about the analysis that the city did that was sort of focused on market?
I want to know what your thoughts were. I've read all of the city's stuff. I mean, what are your thoughts?
We think that the city's approach to looking at projected revenue with respect to potential additional commercial activity was reasonable because of the level of analysis that they applied in taking it markets.
I've got others. I can wait till after a few other people get through, plus I want to kind of read what they just stuck in front of me right click to see what's going on here.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Reynolds. The, with regard to the demographic data that was put forward to you all by the city, have you, in your report, you verified that that data was accurate? Is that correct?
The data that was presented to us, yes, we verified that it was accurate.
Okay. So a reliance on that data going forward by us would, would be accurate as well?
Yeah. The data or the data that...
No, no matter how it was moved around. Okay. The other thing, I, I thought I heard you early on in your comments that you did a comparison of annexation versus no annexation rather than an annexation versus status quo. Could you, could you explain to me why that was again?
Sue, I think we, we, we didn't do that in the context of looking at the cost-benefit analysis, but we think it's important to understand the sort of other factors that come into play if you look at the potential of no annexation, right? So with regard to efficiency of services in the entire region, right, if these areas that, that could potentially be annexed were, won't necessarily stay as they are right now, unincorporated by part of the police district, they could be annexed by another city, they could choose to incorporate on their own, that would have a financial impact on the city. You could have a situation from a regional perspective where you've got, as a result, multiple different cities with multiple different departments delivering similar or same services. That leads to inefficiency in terms of, of service delivery. So we, as part of the council's resolution, we didn't look specifically at no annexation, but we think that it's important to understand the, the context that this really isn't a choice between status quo and annexation. There are implications that go beyond the cost-benefit analysis if the, the city were not annexed. That doesn't prejudge an outcome of this, but we think it's nevertheless important to flag it.
So would it be accurate to say that the annexation versus status quo is not a good comparison because the status quo is not necessarily going to be there going forward?
It's a limited comparison, I would say, that.
Thank you.
Mr. Day?
To go back for a minute to this issue of, of the rate of growth in the study areas. And again, I go back to page seven of your report where you, so, so the low-growth rate that you established was, I think, 3%, is that correct? And the baseline growth rate is 5%.
That's...
So even assuming that the, let me make sure I understand this correctly, even assuming that the stud, the, the population in the study areas grew faster than it is anticipated and the expenses associated with providing those people grew faster, you'd still have a 3%, still a 3% rate of revenue growth against a 5% rate of expense growth would generate $105.7 million over 10 years and $14.6 million in year 10. Am I saying that right?
I think that's right, but I think what you want to think about is if the city saw the, the lowest potential growth on the revenues, so that 3% growth over the 10-year period, but then align that to the baseline or the most likely or the assumed growth in your expenditures, which is that 5%, even if you apply those two scenarios where you're not seeing as much revenue, the lowest scenario on revenue and the highest scenario on expenditures, you would still, to your point, be seeing that $105.7 million in additional revenue over the 10 years and likely that $14.6 or the projected amount of 4.6, $14.6 million in year 10.
Yeah. Thank you. And to go back to Mr., where Mr. Reynolds was, the, the choices we have are not between annexation and maintenance of the status quo. These folks that live in these study areas, they have options other than coming into the city of Mobile and staying in the county. They have options. And to the extent that they incorporate or are annexed by other municipalities, we leave, we lose the revenue that we are currently getting from those areas, the 2.5% sales tax and so forth. So, so with annexation, we have a chance for significant additional revenues. Without annexation, we have a chance for a significant reduction in annual revenues. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, although it would be offset to a certain extent by presumed reduced cost of providing services.
Yeah, but we already know that the, that, yeah.
Right.
One question. There is law, I think, that attributes itself to another municipality encroaching upon our PJ when it comes to annexation also and proper notification. So I, I would think before another municipality reached out and tried to grab something without forcing a lawsuit on the city of Mobile, that there would have to be some type of notification of that. So before there was a major loss, we would have an opportunity to take action. Is that not correct?
There, there are some laws that govern how they come into the jurisdiction, but there is a way to do it legally. I think what you're referring to was a recent annexation that we called into question the legality of it. But, but there is a way to come into our jurisdiction.
Also understood the processes and things that also happened. I, I've asked the demographic question. Now, let's talk about long-range finance projections. You just said a hurt $5 million over 10 years, so we're talking, is that what you just said? A hurt, hurt $5 million over 10 years?
$105.7 million.
So roughly $10 million a year, right?
Yeah, going up to, I think it's $14.6. All right, so it ramps up.
All right, so that would say that in the first couple of years or in the first year, we may even be revenue neutral based on what we're seeing, and we wouldn't really see any true gain until year maybe five.
I, I don't think that's correct, and I think...
When I say revenue neutral, it's a small gain. It's not very much. When significant gains are after or when, what are the significant revenue gains? When do they happen?
Part of, so throughout the study, we sort of have those charts. Part of the jump you'll see is when the SSUT tax comes onboard after the six years, which we assume is in 2030. There's also the business license tax that'll come back that, and as well as property taxes. So there, there is a jump, and if, on page 13 of the presentation, you see sort of the chart where it's got the fiscal impact of study area A. And so you see it's somewhat flat through year five, and then in year six, you see the first jump. And then it continues to jump up particularly as property taxes come back online from the areas that were exempt for the first five years. So you'll see there will be an immediate impact on the revenue side in year one, but then you will see another jump in revenues as sort of the exempted or abated amounts based on the particular revenue source come back into the city rolls around year six.
Yeah. Well, what is the amount of gain in year one?
When you're looking at what the, I'm sorry, William, I just want to clarify your question, but if you're looking at what the revenue gain would be, which area are you looking at? Are you just doing area A, area B, CD?
We looked at the revenue, the city provided it, the revenue for each of the different study areas. We, what's on the slide on slide 13 shows study area A, which is the most all-encompassing or the largest of the study areas.
So to answer his question, are you just giving him each area or an average or...
So I guess my assumption was is that you guys didn't, you only used the data that was given to you, you didn't dig any further into the numbers that were provided by the city to prove that information?
We, we certainly did. So the city provided, broken out revenue lines for each of the study areas over the 10-year period. We took a look at each of those study areas, A through D, the revenues associated and the baseline assumptions, so, or the assumptions for each of the growth scenarios.
Where did you gather your information from?
We received it from the financing.
So again, we're basically looking at what they provided. There was no other additional information gathered from outside the source of the city?
No, the PFM team provided a third-party validation of the city's analysis.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
Let me ask a question, and that, where would that data come from? Who could provide that data other than the city? It's historical data.
No, the PFM team provided a third-party validation of the city's analysis.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
May I ask a question, and that, where would that data come from? Who could provide that data other than the city? It's historical data, so where would it come from?
Well, to be clear, if you're asking me, my assumption was is that there would be some information gathered based on information provided by local businesses, by those teams directly to the study group. Even though the city may have that, you know, I would think that to be truly independent in this case, we would be looking at information gathered solely by them. That's why I asked the question.
To our knowledge, there's nobody, no third party that gathers information, financial data on the city that could be used in such a study as this.
Again, I said that I was hoping that they gathered their own information instead of a teaspoon from us. I was hoping that for 100% validation other than our own information. I'm not trying to poke a hole in you, but what I am hoping was is that something that was not just ours and theirs. Some people in this city believe that we can give them anything that we want to give them. So, in order for that myth to be dispelled, then there needs to be what I think is a true veil removal of them grabbing their own task. So, if that is where this is going to, so that's why that question was asked.
Mr. President?
Reynolds.
I guess this may be a question for Mr. Holt. The financial data that was provided, is that audited? Don't we do an audit annually? Is that correct? Okay. So, you believe that all of the information that's provided was accurate to the best of your ability?
And independently verified.
And independently verified? Your microphone.
The information that we present and audit is historical information. We're not auditing or providing information on our annual reports that are future-related.
But all the, all the historical data that you provided was audited, historical data?
And, yes, yes.
And, councilmember, if I could just add to that, and that's what I was asking to make sure, typically what we do, so essentially what the city did in this case, and what we validated, was to look at what's sometimes called the multi-year financial model, right? So, it's taking baseline data, applying a set of different assumptions, and then building it out going forward. Typically, sort of the baseline year, the beginning year, is driven by information that's, that's from those historical annually audited financial statements. I think that's the point you were going for.
Gregory?
So, one more time, your information from the city, the financial information, is based on the historic or historical annual audited information, and then you take that information and-
We didn't take it.
Well, then you use that and then-
The city finance staff did the initial work on this, right? Because, again, and I know it's confusing, confusing to us, you know, our role in this was as the third-party validator. But part of our validation process was to work closely with the city finance team to make sure that, basically, as they were doing their work, we were understanding, but where the data came from, where and where the assumptions going forward came from, and to assess the reasonableness of that.
And your assumptions were based on that historic information that was audited?
Their, their, the baseline data that the city used was driven by that historical data that comes from the city's annual financial statements. They then made a series of assumptions. I think there's a distinction, right, between sort of what the city did in producing everything in Appendix C and the piece of it that was focused around the cost-benefit analysis. There's data, which we validated, and there's the analysis, which we both validated the data with and assessed the reasonableness of the approach.
I also think it's interesting that you use worst-case scenarios in this. So, it could be better, obviously, than what you're projecting, but the fact that you do worst-case scenario, I, you know, I think is a good way to do it as well, but I think it should give us at least some level of, you know, feeling of, that you're doing the right thing by doing a worst-case scenario so that you're not blowing up the numbers to make us all feel good about it, or to think that it's better than it actually is.
And that's, again, why we think that the city's use of these sort of multiple scenarios so that you can see what the range of possibility could be like is really important, very much to this.
Another councilmember. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'd like to point out the graph that's on the board now. Comment was made that there's not much money differential in that first year. You can see that revenues are projected in the neighborhood of $10 million, and the expenses are, you know, are close to $4 million. So, in year one, you see an excess of $6 million. The comment was made that it does increase after year five, you know, and then on further out. But from year one, it is an economic benefit to the city, and I just want to make sure that everyone understands that.
And I would just comment on that, just for clarification. You'll see that, that actually expenditures go down a little bit from year one to year two. That's because the way, again, this is a good approach by the city's finance team, it puts upfront whatever capital cost investments would have to occur in annexation. So, the gap that the mayor was talking about of revenues over expenditures is actually even greater in years two and three because of that than year one.
And then follow-up from you all. Anything from the administration? Anything from this council? Day? Carroll? Miss Burden?
I would like to say to the PFM team, thank you all very much for putting this together for us. I know it was a lot of work, and to all the administrative staff who had to participate in this, I think this is a lot of helpful information, and I appreciate y'all's efforts in putting this together.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. Can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?